Yes.
Commissioner Laurine?
Yes.
Commissioner Encinas?
Yes.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
Chairman Hartke?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much. That concludes the PHEC, or Public Housing Authority Commission, meeting. Welcome to the December 8, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting. I also would like to call this meeting to order, and Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Hartke?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Encinas?
Here.
Councilmember Poston?
Here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Our invocation tonight will be delivered by a a person who's done this several times, and longstanding pastor Sean Eddy of Chandler Bible Church. Our pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Harris. Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and city staff. It's a privilege to ask God's blessing upon this proceeding and upon yourselves personally. We do in public what we invite everybody to keep doing in private, and that's to lift up our governmental leaders. So thank you for your work. Let's pray, please. And it is, Lord, with a great sense of humility that we come before you on behalf of these proceedings. I thank you for the opportunity to lift up these men and women who are endeavoring to do the work that they've been called to, that they've been entrusted to, that you have given them a privileged position towards, and we pray that your favor would be upon them. Thank you for the leadership that they provide for our great city, and we simply ask that as you would accomplish your purpose through them, that not only would you receive the glory, but that Chandler and surrounding communities really would continue to maintain that which you have purposed for it, and it would be under your blessing. May your your name be made great as you accomplish your good purpose through these people, and I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Councilmember. Next on our agenda tonight is scheduled public appearances. These are both service recognitions from the city as well as people doing incredible things in our community. I'd like to invite Councilmember Hawkins to join me up front. All right. First are our service recognitions. I'd like to call on our city manager, John Pambier, to call those forth.
Mayor, our first service recognition is from the city clerk's office, and I'll let Dana introduce Jessica Sweet for 10 years as she comes on down.
Okay. Jessica began her career with the city clerk's office in 2015 as a customer service representative and a passport agent. Throughout her clerk's office career, Jessica has worked as a city clerk records specialist, senior admin administrative assistant, and currently as a management assistant. Jessica keeps our spending in line as the department's budget liaison. She assists with administration of the boards and commission program, and she welcomes and supports residents at council meetings and always brings the fun to our city clerk office celebrations. Jessica's focus on customer service, self-improvement, and and her genuine care for others has made her a valuable asset to the clerk's office and to the city of Chandler. In the past year, she has achieved her prestigious Certified Municipal Clerk designation as well as her Certified Public Manager designation from ASU. Outside of work, Jessica is supported by her husband Matt, son Jared, daughter Michaela, and her faithful dog Kratos. Congratulations, Jessica, on your 10 years of dedicated service to the city of Chandler, and I just want to say personally, Jessica was here when I got here, and I couldn't have done this without you, so I really do appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
Mayor and council, next up from our Connection and Impact Department, I'd like to ask the director Nikki Tapia to come on down and bring with her Cece, who's being recognized for 10 years of service.
So Cece's 10 years of service reflect the kind of quiet, steady impact that stays with people. She started her journey in public service at 18 years old and has become someone colleagues and community members turn to, not because she seeks the spotlight, but because she listens, she cares, and she consistently follows through. Her work on the Instant Language Assistant has been especially meaningful. Cece helped with the citywide deployment of this tool, allowing individuals with language barriers to communicate with the city in a way that feels respectful and human. Cece also gives generously of her time to support the next generation of young leaders. Programs like the annual Seeds of Legacy event, held in honor of Cesar Chavez, and our new LEAD, Young Adult Leadership Program, are warmer, more supportive, and truly impactful because of her dedication, encouraging leadership development for young people who might otherwise be overlooked. Chandler is a more connected, welcoming community thanks to Cece's efforts, and we look forward to many more years of her hard work, of fun, of compassion, and her smiles.
Mayor and council, next up from Development Services, I'd ask Acting Director Kevin Mayer to come on down and bring with him William Daniel with 25 years of service.
Mayor and council, tonight we honor an individual whose 25 years of dedicated service has made a lasting impact on our community. Originally from Davenport, Iowa, William began his career as a building inspector. He provided exceptional service and ensured safer buildings for the public and Chandler citizens. He welcomed a new challenge in 2016 when promoted to Building Plans Examiner. In this position, he caught deficiencies before construction commenced and ultimately saved customers time and money. William was promoted to Senior Building Plans Examiner in 2017. Fun factoid, his start date for initial employment, his move to plan review, and his promotion to senior all took place on December 11. His dedication extended beyond his career as a proud father of three children and a loving husband to his wife Dawn. As well, William has dedicated one morning each year to provide the department with his nearly world-famous biscuits and gravy. We're grateful to William's contributions, his humor, and his unwavering commitment. Congratulations on 25 years of exceptional service.
Mayor and council, our final recognition tonight is from Public Works and Utilities. I'd ask Acting Director Jeremy Abbott to come down and bring with him Jermaine Swinton with 20 years of service for the city of Chandler.
Good evening. Today, we're proud to honor Jermaine Swinton, whose 20 years of dedicated service have made a long-lasting impact on the Public Works and Utilities Department, Team Chandler, and this community. Originally from Brooklyn, New York, he began his career with the city and collections division as a utility systems tech. His strong work ethic and commitment to excellence led him to the Airport Water Reclamation Facility as a maintenance supervisor. Later, Jermaine moved to the Oktia Water Reclamation Facility, holding the maintenance supervisor position as well. Jermaine's leadership and experience ultimately brought him full circle, returning to where he began his Chandler career, now serving as the Chandler Collection Superintendent and leading the team he once worked alongside. Jermaine's service extends far beyond the workplace. He's an active audiovisual volunteer and deacon at his church, a dedicated Little League coach, and even spent time as a triple minor league baseball player earlier in life. Jermaine holds a Grade IV ADEQ certification in wastewater collections, as well as certifications in distribution, water, and wastewater treatment. Jermaine, we're grateful for your contributions and unwavering commitment. Congratulations on your 20 years of exceptional service. We appreciate all that you do for our community and for the Public Works Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Pambier. Next, we have some recognitions. First up, the Hamilton Robotics Club. We have the Hamilton Huskies up here. We have some extraordinary students to recognize tonight, spanning from STEM to sports and arts, but this is our first up for our Hamilton Huskies Robotics Team. Our Hamilton students competed strongly in the Arizona East Regional Competition, making it all the way to semifinals, and our Chandler students are excelling beyond the school's programs. Several Hamilton students participated in a private community, VEX, team that placed third at the VEX World Championships. STEM education is vital to Chandler's future workforce, and Hamilton Robotics students exemplify the innovation, problem-solving, and leadership that strengthens our community. So let me start with you. If you could state your name and and what year you are and a sentence about what do you like about robotics?
Hello. My name is Alexander, and I'm currently a sophomore at Hamilton High School. One thing I like about our robotics team is being able to spend time with each other and traveling to competitions.
Hi, my name's Ed, and I'm a sophomore. I just want to say the one thing I love about this club is the community it builds and the things that you learn about life and like the skills you gain along the way.
My name's Maya, and I'm currently a junior. My favorite thing about the club is just the community, how supportive it is, but also how intensive it is and how much we learn.
So my name is Bethany Carlson. I'm actually the president of Hamilton Microbots, and my honestly favorite thing is just leading a team. So recently, like with the team, we went from 10 members to over 40 members in under six months, which was like a pretty big change for us, but the biggest thing is just like like all these members didn't have any experience with FRC or even robotics, and just being able to see my team just like grow and change. And it's pretty amazing, especially like with high school, you're pretty limited by like you just go to math, go to your English, and then kind of call it a day. But with our team, you can do so much more than that. We compete in like a worldwide competition where we have to build like bots that can range from like $10,000 to over $100,000 each year, and we're competing against teams who are sponsored by NASA, sponsored by all these crazy companies, and we're very lucky that we're sponsored by Microchip, especially since it is a very big like Chandler organization. And it's just amazing how much we can do at the high school level, even though sure, yeah, we might be 14 to 18-year-olds, like there's still freshmen on my team doing crazy things that I would honestly think a freshman at ASU doing engineering would do. So it's just, yeah, it's pretty amazing, so.
Very exciting. And you've been showing the slideshow? Very good. Excellent. Yeah. We're missing out of it here, sitting in front, so I'm very excited for you guys. We're we're very proud of you guys, and we look forward to this this team, this club continuing to expand, and Team Chandler's with you. So let's take a photo.
Can we get in this picture?
You guys are welcome to.
All right, let's do it.
A little bit later, another Husky's going to be up here. But next, we have the recognition for the GPOA GFOA. You could tell me how we pronounce that. Budget Award. So if our budget team can come on up. I am proud to share that our budget team has received their 38th consecutive GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This achievement reflects our team's steadfast commitment to excellence and transparency, and Matt Dunbar is going to share more.
That's right. So you got it right, Mayor. It's a GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, and we are pleased to tonight to recognize the Budget Department for receiving the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for fiscal year 2526. Chandler's dedicated budget team includes Kat Dixon, Sylvia Delot, Savannah Martinez, Helen Parker, Enrique Sandoval, and Lucy Vasquez, and we are happy to be here to accept this award. The city of Chandler's earned the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for many years. This makes the 38th consecutive year of receiving the award, and it really reflects the commitment the city has to the highest principles of governmental budgeting. To receive the award, the city must satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation, which are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operational guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four major categories and in the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award, and I'm happy to report that Chandler's budget was rated outstanding in many of those areas. Additionally, we'd be remiss if we did not also recognize the vast amount of work done by each department throughout the city, the city manager's office and their staff, mayor and council, for your direction and support to create and improve the budget document each year. And we're thankful for everyone's contributions, and congratulate the city and the Budget Department for this accomplishment, and are proud to have such a talented and dedicated team.
Yes, there's more. We've got several more. It's exciting. Tonight, next, we have recognition for Ballet Under the Stars. So if we can have our Ballet Arizona team, our Cultural Development Department staff, and Hartford Students. Tonight, we're excited to recognize Ballet Under the Stars, a wonderful partnership that meets, that brings free, family-friendly, outdoor ballet performances to communities across the valley, including right here in Chandler. This program, presented by Ballet Arizona, makes world-class dance accessible to all and gives young people a meaningful opportunity to experience and participate in the arts. So a big thank you to Ballet Arizona, our City of Chandler staff, and the Chandler Center for the Arts for the collaboration and hard work that makes this event possible every year. And we are especially proud of the Hartford Sylvia Encinas Elementary School students who participated in this year's events, and we have several with us this evening. Their commitment and excitement lit up the stage and showcased the remarkable creativity and talent of our students. Ballet Under the Stars is a powerful reminder of what we can achieve when we work together. Turning page. When our art community, our schools, and our city joins forces, we create opportunities that none of us could deliver alone. So thank you to everyone involved in making this program a success. I've attended the last two years, and it was a great addition seeing you all up on stage, and I was cheering and rooting you on from right in the middle of the crowd. Kim, can you tell us a little bit more about the program and the city's roles?
Mayor, thank you. You said it beautifully. This was the second year that Ballet Arizona was brought to our community with Ballet Under the Stars. This is a council amendment matched with Chandler Foundation money, so we thank the Chandler Cultural Foundation and council for helping us bring this. We had over 4,500 people that came to this free event, and these girls, and we had one boy, too, that danced in front of all of them. They were amazing, and we thank you guys, and we thank Ballet Arizona for coming to the school three times for an hour to learn this, and we appreciate your enthusiasm and can't wait to see what you guys bring next year. Thank you.
Great. Well, let's take a photo. All right, I gave a hint that we had another Hamilton student who's here tonight. I've met Avishka at an Indian event up in Mesa, and she came on up and told me what she was doing, and we corresponded, so I'd like to call up Avishka and her family to come on up. Avishka started archery. Am I saying your first name right? Very good. I should have asked that. Started archery four years ago, inspired by movies like like Braveheart, The Brave, The Hunger Games, and began training at our very own Paseo Vista Park. She is in her second year of the regional elite team with the goal of competing in the 2028 or 2032 Olympics. Avishka competes in state and national competitions and is headed to Paris for an international competition in January. Through her dedication, sportsmanship, and achievements, Avishka represents Chandler with pride and inspires other young athletes in our community. And we will be cheering you on, and I did tell her that I was willing to stand up in front with an apple on my head and have her pluck it off. If I can't make the time when you're available, Vice Mayor would be more than willing to do the same. Part of the perks of being Vice Mayor. Would you like to say anything?
Yes. First of all, I would like to start off by saying good evening to the mayor, councilmembers, and community members. I would also like to thank you for this incredible recognition. I am truly so honored to be acknowledged for my accomplishments in archery. Over the past four years, I have dedicated myself to developing focus, discipline, and perseverance through this sport. Archery has taught me the importance of setting goals and working diligently to achieve them. I am deeply grateful for the support from my family and my community, and I hope to continue representing Chandler while inspiring youth to pursue their passions. Thank you.
Very good. You are definitely a role model, and we want to have a picture with you. All right. Why don't we scoot over here a little bit more? Right, right here. There you go. There we go. All right, that concludes this portion. Next is our consent agenda. All right, council. We have a consent agenda, a few items before us. How would you like to proceed?
Mayor?
Councilmember Encinas?
Yeah, I move to approve the consent agenda of the December 8, 2025 regular meeting, items 1 through 4.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Encinas, and I heard a second over here. Councilmember Orlando saying no desire to speak or recusals. Council, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you so much. That concludes our regular meeting of the Chandler City Council. Next is our study session. Welcome to the December 8, 2025 Chandler Council Study Session. Again, I'd like to call this meeting to order, and Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Hartke?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Encinas?
Here.
Councilmember Poston?
Here.
Councilmember Orlando?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. There are a few items that have been called in, and staff is prepared to address council questions. First is item number one, brought forth by Vice Mayor Christine Ellis, Resolution Number 5958, authorizing airport improvement grant with FAA for airport electrical upgrades. Stephen Turner.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Excited to be before you tonight, requesting authorization to accept grants from the FAA and from ADOT to fund LED replacements for our runway and taxiways, taxiway Alpha, and then also our four-left, two-to-right runway, our north runway. The current lighting is old incandescent lighting, and there are no current manufacturers to replace this lighting, so we are replacing with LEDs which will last approximately 30-plus years. So the grants we are receiving from the FAA is 95% of the project, and another 2.5% is from ADOT, meaning the city is only going to need to pay about $40,000 towards this project for the total of about a $1.63 million project.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Turner, thank you so much. You guys are doing an amazing job over at the airport, and I wanted the people of Chandler to understand what you're doing over there, receiving this grant, how it was going to put our airport not only in the light for things to come, but can you explain at this time? I know that we are flying lots of airplanes right now. We are one of the busiest airports. Can you explain on that a little bit more about why we need this grant and what it's going to do for us for economically speaking and also helping us moving people back and forth?
Yeah, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Ellis. Yes, we do have a very busy airport, and we do move a lot of people in and out of Chandler through our airport, and this is just another effort to maintain the safety level for our airport. We have a very safe airport, and this is a continued way to invest money wisely into the airport through these grants to make sure that we have some great lighting at our airport for their pilots flying in and out of Chandler and continue to be an economic driver for the city of Chandler.
And this grant, did we obtain that through our grant department, or is that something the airport itself looked out for and went and gets?
Yes, Vice Mayor Ellis. This is an ongoing conversation that we have with the FAA and with ADOT every single year, and we have certain entitlement funds that we are authorized to use, and it's about our continued relationship with the FAA and with ADOT, and we like to thank And we like to thank them as partners with our airport as we continue to maintain our infrastructure at the airport.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Mr. Turner, for all the good work that you guys are doing there.
Thank you. Most of the work goes to Ryan Reeves, our airport manager.
Yes, he's not here today.
He's recovering from surgery. I'm just a stand-in and, but Ryan just definitely loves the airport and his passion is very evident.
We wish him the best. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions or comments related to this? All right. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Second item, item number nine, resolution on number 5964, related to Havenwood Manor. And councilmember Harris and councilmember Orlando called in for questions. Darcy Smith is going to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We did speak to councilmember Harris earlier today. From what I understood, a presentation wasn't necessary anymore. But I'm available for any questions if you have any.
All right. Councilmember Orlando, would you want anything more there or just a question?
Just a real quick couple of things.
Let's go with councilmember Harris for questions.
Well, I was gonna call the applicant lawyer up because I only had a question. I had a couple of questions for him. So, if you want, however you want to do it, because I was gonna call Brenna.
Okay. So, does anyone have questions for Darcy first? Okay. Councilmember Orlando.
Hi.
Hey. At the P&amp;Z meeting, I think there was a request for a traffic study. Did they conduct a traffic study?
Yeah, through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, a traffic study was not done. A traffic statement was done. I do have someone from our traffic engineering team today if you would like to ask her any more specific questions on that.
So, there was not a traffic study done?
Councilmember Orlando, they did a traffic statement in this case since we had a previous use here. They basically compared the previous use to the traffic that's generated by the proposed use so we could see what that difference is.
So, and that's in lieu of a traffic study? I mean, I think the specific request was from P&amp;Z, a traffic study.
From what I heard, I wasn't at P&amp;Z, but from what I heard, they were interested in some traffic. They were concerned, I guess, about speeding. And that is something that we can do at the city. That's not something that we would do necessarily with a project, but we could do that just as a regular city service.
Can we get a copy of whatever you're signing off on before Thursday night of a traffic? Because that was one of the issues the residents had. I think they wanted to feel more comfortable that there was going to be some level of, you know, traffic in that area.
The statement does speak to the number of trips that are going to be, or that are expected from this, you know, this proposed development as well as what was previously there as the warehouse, does that comparison. And we've looked at it and it's approximately one-hundred-and-eighty, I'm sorry, eight-hundred-and-fifty trips per day, which is about seven percent of the capacity of Basha Road. So, in general, it's pretty minor and something not that roadway has the capacity to handle. So, we're comfortable with that.
Okay. That may come up on Thursday night. I know one of the residents called me today and they asked about it as well. So, just be prepared to, whatever data you need to present, I appreciate that, okay? It's a heads up. The tower for, the tower was being used for fire training and I believe the fire chief said it's no longer necessary or something?
Yeah, through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, it is no longer being used for any fire training purposes. It is not safe to use.
Not for this use?
It's not safe to use anymore.
Okay. And I think he already has a replacement for that or something indicated.
I believe so. I'm not.
Yeah. Oh, he's nodding his head. Okay. So, we don't need that anymore. All right. And finally, maybe you can't answer this question. I'll wait for the applicant to come up, okay? Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. We're not done yet. So, you had mentioned the traffic study as a comparison. How do these compare? From what was there and what is projected to being there?
Oh, good.
Hopefully you can, sorry. Hopefully you can see that. The original use had about two-hundred-and-fifty trips. The proposed land use, which I believe is seven hun, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-seven homes, has just under eleven-hundred daily trips for difference of about eight-hundred-and-thirty trips a day. And like I said, that's approximately seven percent of the capacity of Basha Road. And right now, the last time we did counts on Basha Road was 2024. And the actual capacity that was being utilized was under thirty percent. So, there's plenty of capacity to be utilized in that area.
Okay. And related to this, I know at least one resident had asked about the light. Is there any changes available with this increased traffic for left-hand turns at the, going on to Acateo or left ends south on Bash? Is there any plan or discussion about any tweaks to that light?
Mayor, we will certainly keep our eye on that as new developments come in or as redevelopments occur. That's something that we look at and look and see if there's any traffic re-timing that we need to do in that area, whether that's at Acateo or as it comes out on the south. And we will keep our eyes on that.
Okay. And I just had one other question. Is there any opportunity on the Snedeker complex site, at least during heavy use on Saturdays, for, for this particular sports field to connect and exit off of the other? Is there access, crossways south of Acateo for, on sports days, for people to enter or exit to the east side of Snedeker soccer fields? Is that road often open or is it just for internal use?
Have to check with parks on that one. I don't know if that gets opened down there or not on the park side.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. I'd like to know. What's that?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Snedeker has two parking lots, one from Basha and the other from Almazco. And they do not connect.
Okay. Is there any possibilities for connections if, if use warranted or is that just not, not any future projection?
At this point, it would require a study and perhaps some redevelopment of the park itself. And we haven't begun to even think along those lines.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions for Darcy or others? All right. Why don't we call up the applicant? Mr. Ray? Starting with you, councilmember Harris?
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Probably got more questions than what I want, but I, my main question to you is, since the site, since you guys have started developing, if the site brings any traffic concerns with this proposal, so is there, has it been the main issue, traffic concerns have been the main issue with this particular proposal? And then my second question would be, if so, what have you done to work with the city to mitigate those concerns? My two questions I have.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Brennan Ray, twenty-three, twenty-five, East Camelback Road here on behalf of the applicant. First and foremost, let me apologize for my attire. Normally, I appear for you, I'm not dressed with a shirt untucked and wearing Jordans, although those are certainly appropriate shoe wear. But I apologize first and foremost for that dress. It's not, I had no anticipation. I remember Mike Curly years ago made the similar apology, not anticipating that he was going to get called up. With respect to traffic, as you heard, talking with what Dana Alvarez mentioned, we, the site, as you look at it historically, was used as the Bash's corporate office. That corporate office included upwards of two-hundred employees at a given time. Those employees were split between the office component of that corporate campus and then the warehousing side, because this was their distribution facility before they built the one out in West Chandler. And so, if you look at that and compare the uses, we have done that. We have complied with the requirements as far as what has been asked of us from a traffic standpoint to study and to look at. One of the things that makes this site unique is that there is a historic overlay that runs down the west side of Basha Road. That historic overlay was something that I believe the council approved. I'm not sure how long ago, but it keeps in place the palm trees and the open canal, if you will, recognizing the significance of that. Because of that historic overlay, it impacts what I can and can't do with respect to the development of this site. And so, in working closely with staff, we've provided them the necessary info, as Dana indicated, and you see on your screen here, comparing the prior use to this one. And Dana accurately summarized what was, what their position was in looking at it. From our perspective, as we go through this traffic statement process, if staff feels that there are additional concerns relative to the site traffic that we will be generating, then we are asked to mitigate those concerns. As we've talked with staff, there hasn't, the level of traffic that this site will generate doesn't warrant any additional mitigation relative to the site. And particularly what that means when we're talking about mitigation would be deceleration lanes into the site. And so, again, I've got the historic overlay, I've got the historic use. When we look at the uses of this development and look at it from a traffic standpoint, as Dana indicated, there is more than sufficient capacity within Basha Road to accommodate this site traffic.
Mayor?
Continue.
Yeah. And just in terms of perspective, based on what the current land use was and based on residential, are we talking about the same amount of traffic? Are we talking about just a slight increase because of family? Or are we talking about that we're comparing traffic numbers to traffic numbers without a large increase?
So, through the mayor, councilmember Harris, let me see if I can answer your question.
Yeah.
When comparing it, there are three categories, if you will, that traffic is looked at. The first category is daily trips. Recognize that a trip is a vehicle movement. It does not represent a vehicle itself. And so, what you will see in the traffic statement is that we compare the overall trips within a twenty-four-hour period. And then, we break it down even further and look at it at the AM and PM peak hours. And it's really in the AM and PM peak hours that there really is a heavy amount of scrutiny because as you would expect during the AM hours, which are typically seven to nine AM, when people are going to and from school, going to and from work, that's when the capacity or the volume of traffic on a road is going to increase. Same with PM, generally four to six PM, three to five, kind of that window in there when we look at it at PM. And I don't have it in front of me. I tried to pull it up quickly, but my recollection is, and you can, I don't know that this is correct, but I think as you look at it, there is not more, this development does not generate more traffic in the AM and peak hours than what was originally proposed. And we're, I need to have an additional conversation with Dana about it. But I do know that at least as we've looked at it, we're not increasing the amount in the critical hours of the day.
Mayor, last question. Have, have your team worked with the residents that's in that area to let them know that's kind of, what has, what has been your community involvement in that particular area as it pertains to this particular site?
Yeah. Through the mayor, councilmember Harris, I've had a discussion, a couple of discussions with one of the neighbors that live in there, in addition to having two neighborhood meetings.
Okay. And then, what was the outcome of that, those neighborhood meetings? Was there opposed? Was there against? What was the overall feel of that?
So, through the mayor, councilmember Harris, the two concerns that came up were traffic, as we have been discussing tonight. The other one was a concern about the density of the, of K. Hovnanian's proposed development.
Just last question about the density. What was your response to that, to the community? And what was their reaction to your response to the density?
Yeah. So, through the mayor, councilmember Harris, as we've looked at density and have worked closely with the planning department and understanding the density that exists in the area, we kind of fall right in the middle. Is this the presentation from council or from commission? She knows her presentation better than I. So, in looking at the density, the proposed density of this development, we are, as you can see on there, one-hundred-and-seven lots with a density of five-point-seven. That falls kind of within the middle of what exists in the area today. North of the site, you have the Estelon Townhome Development with a density of approximately eight-point-seven. Southeast of the site, you have Park, I'm gonna forget the second name of that development that was recently approved, and there five-point-three. And those are two-story homes as well. There are some one-story in there. But in terms of density, and if you go out a little bit further, you're gonna see higher density than what is on the screen today. But in terms of density, we fall roughly in the, in the middle of what exists in the area.
All right. Councilmember Orlando?
Thank you, Mayor. What's the timeframe of this development?
Through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, if approved, K. Hovnanian will move forward expeditiously. They want to get it underway. They're out doing some testing. Obviously, there's a lot of demolition that will need to occur on the site and remediation potentially. And so, as soon as they are able to do that, they will move forward with building these homes.
What type of remediation have to do?
Through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, as you can imagine, with it being corporate offices for a very long time and with the amount of repairs and everything, someone's gonna have to look at the soil closely and do environmental studies to make sure that there's not problems. We don't initially believe there are, but that's something that's just part of the process of a normal process when you're redeveloping a site. You look at everything and that environmental kind of stuff is something that would come up, especially given what's transpired on the site for a very long time.
Okay. Will this be an HOA?
Through the mayor, yes. Councilmember Orlando, this is planned to be a for-sale community that will have an HOA, common area tracks, common area open space, kind of your typical single-family subdivision.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor? Turn your free card. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I know you mentioned the historical value of the land and what's happening there. And we've received a letter from JB Investment, which is from David Bashers himself. And the part that I wanted to talk to you about is that Mr. Bashers feels that his family has been recognized numerous ways into this community and that having the tower right now, preserving the tower is not merited at this time. Is that something that you guys have discussion with him? Are you well aware that he has sent us this email and this letter?
Yeah. Through the mayor, Vice Mayor Ellis, that actually was an email that I had forwarded to you all. So, I'm very much aware of the letter and of its contents. I know that with respect to the Bashers family, there are many untold stories of Eddie not wanting the limelight. And based on that and based on kind of the contents of that letter, we are very aware of it. Notwithstanding that, in the presentation on Thursday, if necessary, you will see that what we are providing is an interpretive sign. That's in here? Yeah. Anyway, I can get you that information. I know we're short on time, but in terms of this sign, there is, we plan on having it, it's not there. You can kind of see it in the middle of this picture if it's on your screen. Kind of a thing. If you look, I can give more details, but we do plan on recognizing the fact that it was the home of the Bashers corporate. And with that interpretive sign, there will be a steel plaque. You can kind of see a steel and a silver thing square in the middle. That will be a steel plaque that will be talking about the site and the history of it. In addition, working with the planning commission, they wanted us to include a silhouette of the water tower on this very same element, and that's an additional PDP stipulation. And so, we're trying to preserve it in a way that's appropriate. This will be located proximate to the sidewalk so that people, as they walk by, will be able to see and see this sign and understand a little bit of the history.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Any more questions, Amara? Councilmember Poston?
Hi, Brennan. I think we discussed this a little bit, but some of those homes on the most southern end of the property back right up to a very busy ballpark with lighting and one of our older dog parks. Can you just talk a little bit about what you'll be doing to make sure that the residents are aware before they buy their home there?
Yeah. Through the mayor, councilmember Poston, there is, if I remember correctly, there is an additional stipulation that was added to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that at the Planning Commission that we were absolutely okay with, that would require us to provide a separate disclosure to the residents notifying of the city's facilities, of the dog park being next to them. It will go in the CCNRs. And so there are multiple ways, it's kind of the city's boilerplate stipulation when we're notifying of things adjacent that might cause some people to raise an eyebrow or two. The other thing that, and it's tough to see on the scale of the site plan, but what we have done, where lot 37 is, if you can see on it, that is north of the, the dog park. As we work with staff, understood we want to push them as far away from the dog park as we can so we don't have any immediately backing up to it, which we've done in this, in this instance.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Hawkins.
Yeah, actually, mine was quite in line with council member Poston. I just was concerned about the lighting from Snedeker, and I don't know for sure, I just assume that there are the large lights there for the ball fields. Is there any concern that that would impact those neighbors behind there? I see the setback has quite a bit, but I guess is there anything there to be aware of or to be concerned of?
Yeah, through the mayor, council member Hawkins, not, not that I'm, I'm aware of. Again, there is that stipulation, it is stipulation number seven in the rezone, if you look at that. You know, if we need to add some other words in it about lighting or anything, I know that that stipulation seven specifically says located adjacent nearby the existing Snedeker Sports Complex and Dog Park. And, you know, may cause adverse noise, odors and other externalities. And then there's all the things that we have to do in that stipulation seven to notify people. If we need to add lights specifically in that, more than happy to do that. I think that kind of goes kind of with Snedeker Sports Complex, but if we need to add that word, we don't have a problem doing that.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that.
Mayor. Yes, I would like that, that word lighting to be added into that. And then also, and also I kind of probably want to do an, just adding, because that could be close to, to where neighbors are. I don't know what the noise difference or the noise gap was going to be, it's going to be. But that could create like some type of nuisance. So I'm just sitting here thinking that maybe we need to have the word nuisance because that can be a very wild word, a bigger word. But the word nuisance and the light could, should be two words added to the contract. Because when they buy this property, if they decide, if the homeowners decide to buy it, what, what my fear is with it being right next to Snedeker, which is a regularly used park and Chandler, my fear is that the noise complaints that they could get, it seemed like you was addressing it pretty good. But I think just adding the word, adding the light, because that is a nuisance that may flood into their area, or maybe if they build it in a way that can reduce that amount. And then also adding the word nuisance, I'm just concerned about that it could, the level of noise when we're having tournaments or bigger plane could increase to the word, to the word nuisance. And if it does, I really don't want those neighbors calling, calling me and saying, hey, look what I signed up for, I just kind of want to make sure that it's very clear that it's, it's there. So if you can add that to your contract, that would be, that would be very helpful, at least for items, at, at least for the ones that's close, close by, so that they'll know it's there.
Yeah, through the mayor, council member Harris, we'll work with planning and we'll work with the city attorney's office. Nu- nuisance is, is a legal term that we'll, we'll work with the party, we'll work with everybody on.
And, and then the lights, as, as the lights as well?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
And if you could let us know, obviously before Thursday, if there's any additional steps that would need to be read into the record. So reach out to us sooner than later on that.
Yes, we will do that, Mayor.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Next on consent agenda, items called in are items number 10, 11, 12, entertainment use permits. By council member Harris, if Michaela Labard can come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Through the mayor, council member Harris. As you know, there are three entertainment use permits on the agenda this evening. When reviewing these, the goal of planning staff is to anticipate the potential impacts before the use begins and to establish reasonable conditions that support, that support both livability and local businesses. We consider factors such as amplified music versus acoustic music, hours of operation, and where entertainment is located on site. When a permit is issued, an initial time condition is stipulated so staff can reevaluate if the entertainment activity is compatible with the surrounding area. As part of this review, we consult the police department for any reported noise issues. If the business has been a good neighbor, staff may consider removing the renewal requirement. In the event that we receive noise complaints about the establishment prior to the expiration of their permit, staff will then contact the business to remind them of the permit conditions and try to resolve the matter directly. If multiple disturbances occur, another short timeframe, typically a year, may be added with additional conditions to address these concerns. If concerns continue and it's determined that the establishment is not a good neighbor, the zoning administrator has the authority to revoke the entertainment use permit.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kayla, I appreciate you bringing this, bringing this forward and doing a good job with the presentation. A part of, there's twofold to this, number one, I wanted to send, give kudos to mayor and council, particularly on this issue, first because mayor and council found a way to streamline, streamline to help businesses kind of move forward and, and making it an administrative function versus it always happened to come to council directly to, to have a discussion where we'll have staff evaluating the key things that needs to be evaluated and making sure that, as, as my Brennan just alluded to, as I alluded to, the nuisance part of it, which is the concern that most of the neighbors are concerned about is noise. And that's kind of why I wanted to bring this forward because administratively, staff will work with the applicant to make sure whatever permit they are applying for, they're going to make sure that the mitigation is happening with the neighbors, making sure that community members know that this is going up and making sure that these items are being properly taken care of. So I wanted to, number one, just show how mayor and council is, is cutting red tape, making sure businesses are able to keep going by having amazing staff to, to work to issue. My, my question is this, is there a way that we can streamline the process for businesses that's not near residential neighborhoods? Is there any way that we can do that? In regards to entertainment and, and.
In regards to entertainment, per the code, the triggers for these entertainment use permits are actually distance requirements. So if there is indoor entertainment and, or speakers in the outdoor, then there's a 600-foot requirement to any residentially zoned property. In the case that this entertainment is live and it's outdoor, then the threshold increases to 1,340 feet in that case. But outside of distance, I don't believe that there is any code that we have as a tool.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I kind of want to figure out a way too with the businesses that this is at council level because it's on our consent agenda to, to talk about, to discuss and to be, to bring forth, and it was debriefed. My question is trying to, how do we take this administrative process and streamline it more so that way it can be taken care of with staff versus always coming here unless council, mayor and council wants that? But I'm just trying to figure out how can we streamline it a little bit faster? So businesses doesn't always have to wait, because they have to wait till this fully evolves and then it comes to us. I'm just trying to figure out, have we, are there any ideals of how we can make this process a little bit faster? So that way businesses are not waiting to activate up and use their facility in the full measure on which it can be made, uh, used? Is there a way that we can do that? Do we have ideals around that?
Mayor.
Councilmember White, I think it might be better to have a study session, look at this rather than. I do know that we, we certainly have done some things I, I don't think that council wants to totally remove. Before you all were here, we had some folks that were quite attracting neighbors by the music that was coming. But I, I'd certainly welcome us to further this conversation at a policy level rather than a days level. But your points are noted.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure businesses are able to get what they need to get up and running. And I just kind of wanted to have any, if we have any ideals of how we can get there. If that's a policy decision, then I, I would ask the city manager to pull together a work session so we can kind of work on that, city manager.
Mayor, council member Harris, we can do that.
Yeah, let's pull together some thoughts, then reach out to us and see what we want to do. City attorney, do you have anything else on that?
No, Mayor, I was just going to say what, what you did, this is, we have a code that is being followed for these permits right now. If you want to change that or, or enhance it, that's a different discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I, thank you, Kayla, I appreciate you guys getting the question answered. And to the applicants, all right, good luck on your business endeavors, thank you.
Any additional questions for her on these three items? Thank you so much. All right, next item called in is item number 15, purchase of fiber network repair and upgrade services. Councilmember Orlando, did you want a presentation or have a question?
No, I just wanted to get a question about.
All right, Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you, can you take us back a little bit what we're doing here? And then what the go-forward plan is, okay?
Sure. Mayor, council member Orlando, just a little refresher, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight about our fiber, our outside plant fiber program and the fiber network repair and upgrade services that's on your agenda for approval. The city has been installing fiber, well, connecting up traffic signals since the late 70s, early 1980s. We've migrated from copper to fiber in the early 1990s. We started hanging, connecting up city buildings and, and all sorts of other facilities, libraries, fire stations, police stations, a real-time crime center, all those sorts of things work over the fire, over the fiber network. So really, the city's been well-advanced in terms of smart city type stuff well before that was a buzzword. So this, unfortunately, there was, there was no master plan to that. So there were some gaps in that network that have been since identified through a master plan that was done in 2020. And those, through those deficiencies that were identified, that's where this program is coming from. So we're on about year four of the, of the plan, which was a 13-plus-year plan. The, the program averages about a million and a half to $2 million a year based on the $20,000 projections. So that's going up a little bit with inflation over the years. That's what we're bringing forward today.
So Mayor, just a follow-up question, thank you for, for that, because I know it's important. This is just for city, city function, and I like how you termed that smart city before it became smart city, I like that. But, excuse me, is this actually replacing a fiber or is it going through and testing it? And then determining if there's still, it's still viable latency and that type of activity? And then you replace it as you go along?
It's all of the above.
Okay.
Through the mayor, council member Orlando, we, we've done an analysis of, there are some places where as fiber was built out on road projects and, and conduit was put in with development projects and periodically fiber was come and placed in some of that conduit. Some places where the fiber, there were gaps, where the fiber needed to be connected to create, depending on the type of network, whether it's for our traffic, they use kind of a cloverleaf set of rings. If it's for our city network, they use a mesh network that we're adding to, to improve, to create. So that if one location gets hit by somebody boring in the street, one of these non-city utility companies, for example, that we don't lose half of the city again.
Got it. And you're looking at redundancy as well?
Yes, so part of, part of the 2018 incident was that one fiber cable was hit, it took down the south half of the city. And when they, they assumed we had redundancy built into it, which we did, it was all, the multiple fibers were all connected in that one cable. So this program is creating diverse routes around the city where the, the redundant connections are not following the same path.
Thank, thank you, great job, thank you, Mayor.
Additional questions? Thank you, Dennis. Our last item called in, item number 27, by council member Harris, looking at the purchase of body-worn cameras and Assistant Chief Deandra. Councilmember, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, chief, I wanted to, if you can give a, just a small brief on what this, on what we're doing here, and then I just had a, a few questions for you.
Sure, absolutely, good evening, Mayor and Council, through the mayor, council member Harris. So tonight, we are proposing a renewal of our contract with Axon for the police department's body-worn cameras. Our previous contract was for just over 2.9 million for 369 body-worn cameras. That also included any supporting hardware, our mounts, our unlimited storage, along with some other features. The current renewal that you have here before you this evening is another five-year contract for just over 3.5 million. That will include 392 body-worn cameras. Those will be for all sworn police officers, our police aides, our reserves, and then also provides our department with spares in case any of them break or become non-operational. Those also include six POV cameras for our motor officers so they can mount those onto their helmets. And that also includes the supporting software that I spoke about earlier, specifically the GPS location for all of the, the body-worn cameras. We have community request, which is a evidence link management, which is sent out to any community members who want to upload any type of digital evidence. We have Axon Performance, which is a metrics that we use to monitor how our officers are activating their body-worn cameras, and we use it as an auditing system as well. We also have a redaction assistance, which assists our records division with doing any redactions for any public records requests. And then auto-tagging, which allows our officers to automatically categorize their body-worn camera evidence in our CAD, which is our computer-aided dispatch and our report management system.
Thank, thank you, Melissa, um, thank you, chief, I appreciate your, for the debriefing. I just had a few questions for you, I'll, I'll start with my first question is, what are the policies that governs the cameras that are on, what, what policies do we have in place to govern?
Yeah, so, specific to the activation of our body-worn cameras?
Yes.
Okay, so through the mayor, council member Harris, we have our general orders, which we have a specific policy which governs our body-worn camera policy. Specific to the activation, it is required that all employees that are equipped with body-worn cameras activate, activate them upon dispatch to a call for service. So anytime they're dispatched to a call for service, they are required to activate their body-worn camera. That includes any self-initiated activity, so that could be anything where they're contacting, consensually contacting a member of the public, a traffic stop, it could be on a search warrant, any type of a detainment or an arrest or transport of an individual, they're mandated to have their body-worn camera on. Any, any of our use of force incidents, if there is a vehicle, a vehicle containment or a takedown, we're on a search warrant. So that's just to name a few, so pretty much any type of law enforcement activity that we engage in, they're mandated to have it on.
Okay. And I wanted to know about the storage, if the, if the data is costly? And I, I want you to talk about the, the cost of the data, and then are we, what ways are we mitigating the cost to make sure that we're not spending so much money storing these, the footage that has to be stored over a period of time?
Absolutely, through the mayor, council member Harris, the great thing about Axon and the contract that we have with them is it provides unlimited storage for us. So we have an unlimited amount of digital evidence that we can store through Axon. So the, the amount of it has not been a concern for the police department.
And then my last question is that in terms of how this information is accessed, can this information be accessed, like let's say law enforcement leaves the, the network of the city, whether it's in their car or however, they may tap into, can law enforcement go home and then tap into the system when they're away from the city?
Through the mayor, council member Harris, the, the evidence is uploaded into evidence.com, which is Axon's storage platform that they utilize. An employee has to log in to be able to ax on that, excuse me, to access the evidence through there. So if the user is logging on, let's say that it is from a home location or on their cell phones, they have the access to that on their cell phones, they do have the ability to access it. But it is all tracked and audited so that we, we can see who is accessing it and for what purpose. One of the things that we also. Uh, one of the things that we also have through the police department is a policy which governs when, uh, employees are able to access that, um, evidence. And so it is, uh, absolutely, uh, prohibited for any employee to review, uh, the body-worn camera of any other personnel in the department. Uh, there would have to be supervisory approval for that, and there are specific reasons which would allow that. And, uh, no employees are allowed to access any type of, um, body-worn camera evidence or digital evidence without it being for a law enforcement, a law enforcement purpose.
Okay, and so when they, if they do access it, there has to be, uh, there has to be a legal, there, so you're saying when they access it, it's leaving a digital footprint because they're logging into it? And then per the policy that if they log into it, then there has to be, um, there has to be a policy-related reason that, uh, that they're logging into it? And if, if they do, or let's say if they do and they did not have a policy, what typically happens after that?
Yeah, through the mayor, councilmember Harris, um, yes, they have to have a legitimate law enforcement purpose reason to access that evidence. If for any reason an employee, um, improperly accessed that evidence, they would be investigated term, uh, internally by our professional standards and held accountable for that.
And how do we, how, how are, um, how are we making sure that the policies are being followed?
Yeah, uh, through the mayor, councilmember Harris, um, on several ways. So we, uh, we do, uh, I talked about, um, Axon Performance. That, uh, provides every supervisor, uh, with two body-worn camera videos that they have to review for every one of their employees, um, monthly. On top of that, uh, our professional standards units does audits. So they look at the body-worn cameras and the auditing of the usage of our body-worn cameras as well as Axon Performance provides those metrics to our supervisors. But also, most importantly, we are an accredited agency, and that is something that, uh, Kalia comes in and looks at, uh, when they do an assessment of our agency.
And so because of the fact that we're, we have, so with this particular thing, like normally data is accessed and it costs us like so many, like twenty gigabytes, we get so much data. You're basically saying the way we're cost mitigating this is by have, enter, by entering this agreement, it allow us to have unlimited, um, unlimited access to the data and it allows us to do unlimited drops into the debt, the data pool so it's not costing the taxpayers more money if, if it's more data than the month before or normal, un-normal data behavior. That's the way I say it.
Yeah, through the mayor, councilmember Harris, uh, through Axon, they provide an unlimited storage amount for us to, um, upload, uh, the digital evidence to the cloud where they do not cost us an additional amount. There's not anything extra that we would be, um, billed for monthly or annually because we went over an excessive amount. Uh, it is unlimited storage data, which is built into our contract.
All right, thank you, chief. Appreciate you.
Additional comments or questions?
Chief, thank you so much for working on this contract with, uh, Axon. I, from what I heard from city manager, uh, you guys started almost, uh, double the price. And then you got to this, the, what you're charged with right now, I believe, is to look at different avenues in different way because they don't have any competition right now in the market. And we are looking at different ways that we can find other people who are working on different things to work with them. As an innovative city, we always looking forward to see what other companies are doing in that area.
Uh, through the mayor, uh, Vice Mayor Ellis, uh, yes, thank you. Uh, we were able to negotiate this contract down to, um, significantly lower levels. But yes, we are constantly assessing and evaluating what other, uh, businesses or organizations are out there that could potentially be a competing factor and seeing if they would be a viable product for us to use in the department. Uh, we do this with a, a wide variety of, uh, technology, um, currently. So, uh, the body-worn cameras are something that we're always looking at.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate you.
Seeing no additional comments, thank you so much, Assistant Chief. Council, that concludes the items that have been called in tonight. We'll have a chance to vote on these. We do have a study work session at four PM next Thursday as well. So look forward to seeing council and staff at that. And that concludes our meeting tonight.